Okay, let's call this meeting to order. City of North Kansas City, Missouri, regular council meeting and a motion to close part of the meeting, October 1, 2019. Can we have a moment of silence? Approval of the agenda?
It's all moved. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask the council to remove item number 24 on the agenda.
Okay.
This is the emergency snow route on Armour Road. Previous discussion, it's probably premature and so would suggest the council approve the agenda with the removal of that item.
Approve the agenda with item 24 removed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We got the approval of the agenda?
We do.
Okay. Comments from the public?
I'm Randy Bennett and I live on the 2,400 block of Fayette. I'd like to thank everybody that yellowed the curb from 26th to 23rd to stop our no parking problem. The signs just will not work. So maybe I don't have to call the police department when I've got seven cars parked on the wrong side of the road. My next issue is with the school. We need more police presence when they let out. Some of these kids are running up Fayette about 80, which is ridiculous. If we set a vehicle on the end of Fayette where it is one way, maybe taking some radar, maybe we can stop this issue. They do the same thing down 26th Street also. And it's usually about time, you know, their lunchtime or when school lets out, but it has just gotten really, really bad. And that is my comments. If we could get some more police activity in the neighborhood for the school letting out.
Take note of that.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
And you guys had put up the sign last year flashing speed up. I mean, it did seem to help to some point, but it had to get moved to somewhere else because we only had one of them. Hopefully in the next budget year when we have two, we can deploy a couple of them at the same time. Because I agree, I mean, I live on Fayette as well. I mean, you see it a lot in the morning, you see it during lunch, you see it, you know, it corresponds with the school hours, you're seeing a lot more speeding going up and down the street there. There's a lot of kids that live in the area too, so make sure we got a safe road. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public hearing? Oh, okay. Eighteen.
Public hearing, water and sewer rates.
Okay, we want to open a public...
Yes, sir. I suggest you open the public hearing and begin with the staff report.
Yeah, okay. Open a public hearing. Eric.
Thank you, sir. We have, this is, the water and sewer rates have been the subject of council work session before and council provided some preliminary direction at that time. And so now before you is our ordinances with new water and sewer rates per the direction that you provided us back at the prior work session on this. And since you have discussed it, I won't go into great detail unless you'd like me to. But staff is rec, and I'll cover both water and sewer, I guess, right at this moment. Staff is recommending because of problems that we've talked about in the Water Pollution Control Fund with additional expenditures for various reasons that had not been planned upon that we increased sewer rates by 12% in calendar year 2020. That's the same increase as occurred in calendar year 2019. And it would leave the fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2020 at about 11.3% of budgeted operating expenses in this fund versus 25%, which is your policy. On water, in order to help to offset the effects of the substantial increase that's being recommended, staff does recommend that, just the same as last year, the city reduce its water rate to customers by 5%. And after that transfer, the water fund is estimated, even with $3 million transfer of funds to the gaming fund, which is in the budget you've just approved, is estimated to end fiscal year 20 with a fund balance equal to about 111% of budgeted operating expense. So the overall effect on a typical bill would be about 4.5% increase. And that is what is before you in the ordinances that will follow this public hearing. Do you have any questions?
And, you know, for the public, you know, a lot of that sewer rate, it's just our hands are tied. Can you refresh the memory of what we're paying Kansas City in their next budget just for sewer? And if people might understand more why sewer rates had to go up and we tried to offset that with lower than...
Yes, sir. So we are budgeting $6,800,000 as our payment to Kansas City for sending sewer there and having it treated.
So almost $7 million, so people probably don't realize that. And so just thought I'd bring it up.
But that, one question on that, that wasn't really the cause of the increase this year, though, because they only increased their rates on us 1%.
No, no, that's just the amount that we're paying them. But no, their increase was not, was not all that substantial compared to previous years in this last year.
Do we know, is that, do the residents of Kansas City also get an increase?
Well, they pay, we pay wholesale amount. They pay...
Retail.
A retail, so it's, but yes, I mean, residents of Kansas City, speaking as a resident of Kansas City, have been getting substantial sewer rate increases each year.
Thank you.
Okay, we ready to close the public hearing unless somebody else is...
Take any public comments, there might be.
Any public comments? Hearing none, I guess we'll close the public hearing. Number nineteen.
Amending sewer rates for calendar year 2020, bill number 7449, ordinance number 9246.
Eric.
Now before you is sewer rate increase that we've discussed.
First reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing new sewer service charges, amending section 13.08.020, sewer charges of the code of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I move the bill number 7449 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9246.
Second. Call roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance establishing new sewer service charges, amending section 13.08.020, sewer charges of the code of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
Number twenty.
Amending water rates for calendar year 2020, bill number 7450, ordinance number 9247.
Now before you is the water rate decrease that we discussed.
First reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending the code of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri by repealing sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 of paragraph B of section 13.04.140, water rates and charges, and enacting in lieu thereof new sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 of paragraph B of section 13.04.140 of the code.
I move the bill number 7450 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9247.
Second.
Call roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance amending the code of the City of North Kansas City, Missouri by repealing sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 of paragraph B of section 13.04.140, water rates and charges, and enacting in lieu thereof new sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 of paragraph B of section 13.04.140 of the code. Clay County Economic Development Council membership level, resolution number 19-066.
Eric.
Thank you, sir. The city is a platinum member of the Clay County Economic Development Council at an annual cost of $2,500. And last week TJ Berry, Executive Director of the Clay County EDC, gave me a call and said that he would like the city to consider becoming a diamond club member as most of the Clay County cities of substantial size and importance are. And so I have placed that on the agenda. I believe that TJ is here, and TJ, would you like to speak to the request?
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak. The membership levels of the Clay County Economic Development are set not on population, they're set on the benevolence of the cities and the memberships. Because the service that we offer, whether it is a small business, a large business, somebody coming into the area or retaining, it doesn't matter. We have a job to do and we have a mission to complete. So we work very, very hard with the budget that we do have. And as you know, the county has been a little bit under stress. And so for the last two years, the county has not financed the Economic Development Council, and we've had to lean a little bit more on the cities. And then we've gone out and worked very hard to increase our membership. We're doing well, and next month will be my two-year anniversary. And we've been really trying to get involved with the local businesses because retaining companies is where the growth of employment, along with the new businesses that are started here. Attraction is sort of the cherry on the, on the top when we have a new business move in. So that is why I'm here asking you for, to increase like several of the other cities have.
Questions?
I think it's a good idea. It's a small variable price to pay to, for the benefits I think that it gives us and it gives you, so I think it's a great idea.
And one of the things it does include is several of the council attended the luncheon last week, and that comes just as part of that membership level. So it won't be a separate expense for you next year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approving easement for AT&amp;T Communications facilities, bill number 7448, ordinance number 9245.
Eric.
Thank you, sir. I'll call the Community Development Director, Sarah Copeland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These next two items are both related to the public hearing that you held at your last council meeting in reference to Hunt Midwest's request to vacate right-of-way at the corner of 32nd and Swift. In the process of preparing their vacation request, Hunt Midwest found, they reached out to all of the area utility companies and found that in this area there was an AT&amp;T Communications fiber optic line that would be prohibitively expensive to relocate. And so they have proposed leaving it in place, and that would require the dedication of an easement to AT&amp;T. Then that's what's before you in this item. This easement has been reviewed and approved by AT&amp;T, and the dedication here gives them the right to enter the described area to maintain their facilities. John Burkle with Hunt Midwest is here. I would be happy to answer any questions, I'm sure he would also.
I have a question. I didn't ask this last time, and maybe this is obvious, but it is a live line, right? It's a used line, the AT&amp;T line?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't ask that last time, I just don't want to do this if it's not...
Yes, it is, it is a live line, it's multiple live lines.
First reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance approving and conveying an easement to Southwestern Bell Telephone Company doing business as AT&amp;T Missouri in the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I move the bill number 7448 be placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9245.
Second.
Call roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance approving and conveying an easement to Southwestern Bell Telephone Company doing business as AT&amp;T Missouri in the City of North Kansas City, Missouri. Vacating right-of-way at 32nd and Swift, bill number 7452, ordinance number 9249.
First reading. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance vacating certain street rights-of-way for Swift Street located south of 32nd Avenue in the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
I move the bill number 7452 be placed on second, final reading and passes ordinance number 9249.
Second. Call roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance vacating certain street rights-of-way for Swift Street located south of 32nd Avenue in the City of North Kansas City, Missouri.
Number twenty-five. Thank you, thank you.
Amending the city's personnel policy regarding medical marijuana, resolution number 19-065.
Eric.
Thank you, sir. Missouri Constitutional Amendment 2, which was passed in late 2019, allowed for Missourians to use marijuana for medical purposes. So it is necessary to amend the city's personnel policy to provide how employee use of marijuana shall be treated by the city as an employer. Medical marijuana is not yet legal, according to federal law. And allowing the use of marijuana by employees for any purpose would run afoul of federal law and endanger the receipt of federal grants, of which the city has made fairly extensive use in recent years. Until federal law changes, a policy of zero tolerance represents the consensus of municipalities in the state and in this region. And so accordingly, it is recommended that the city amend the city's personnel manual in a fairly simple way. We looked at a lot more extensive changes and concluded that simple was easy enough and would work. And that is to simply say that the use by city employees of marijuana or THC in any form and for any purpose is prohibited. And employee use of marijuana or THC is subject to all provisions of the further sections of the personnel manual, which I provided to you just for context. So that change to the city's personnel manual is recommended to you.
This CBD, is that, is that considered a medical marijuana?
No, sir, because it doesn't contain THC.
What's that?
It does not contain THC, which is the active ingredient of marijuana.
Oh, okay, so that...
So, that is, but if we have a test, if we were to test employer for some reason and they came up positive, we, you know, that would be our trigger, so...
Oh, okay.
But CBD would not, it's, yeah, it's been legal even before Constitutional Amendment 2, or at least it's been selling, but even before Constitutional Amendment 2.
How are states handling this, who have allowed medical marijuana for several years? It's new in Missouri, so I'm not surprised that other, you know, municipalities here have a zero tolerance policy, but how are other states handling it?
I haven't, honestly, I haven't done a lot of research on other states. Have talked pretty extensively to other localities in Missouri, and this is the way folks are going because of the federal law. But I couldn't tell you in states, yeah, where, that have other marijuana laws, what they've done.
My second question is related to testing. Do you test based randomly, or do you test based on probable cause or concern about the person's job performance?
So for the most part, the latter, but that's, that is actually kind of why I've included all these sections, just for your benefit, which you might take a look at some point. But for the most part, yeah, we do it for reasonable suspicion. Something has occurred, some kind of behavior, or something that, or conceivably smell, in the case of marijuana, they reeked, but, but also post-accident testing, we will often do it for that reason if there's an accident in a city vehicle. That's just as a matter of course, to make sure that they weren't under the influence of something. Random testing typically just, we do for certain employees who have a, what is the name of it?
CDL.
The license, the commercial...
CDL.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, CDL license. We'll do it randomly for them. But those are the only employees we do it randomly for, that and occasionally for emergency personnel. But most, most employees who are not subject to, you know, are either a CDL license holder or emergency responders do not get tested randomly. It's been determined problematic to do that if you don't have a good cause.
I'll just add to her question that, from attending national conferences, I know it's definitely a conversation and a concern, as I said, I don't know their individual policies, but I know it's, there's some gray area to that, because you don't want to put yourself at risk of losing the federal funding.
Right.
Because that could come up too. I can't think what the law is, but you have to abide by all federal laws.
Right, so, yeah, in order to get a federal grant, you also have to have policies that are in line with federal law. If not for that, we would very possibly have a very different kind of feeling for you tonight, but it's really, that is, that is the reasoning for the recommendation before you, federal law.
Even though, I'm not sure they've even called anyone out on that yet either, but I think there's just, no one wants to get in that gray area and lose out on potential for funding.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution to authorize certain persons to effect securities transactions with Commerce Bank NA, resolution number 19-067.
Eric. Thank you, sir. I'll call the finance manager, Shirley Land.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Recently, when I was finalizing some bids, Commerce Bank 1 bid, they do that quite frequently, and they asked if we would update our permissions as to who can do investments for the city. And when I asked them who was currently on there, they named two individuals who weren't working here when I started 17 years ago. So it's been quite a while since this has been updated. They do have a form, but the form referenced agreements that we don't have with Commerce, such as bank accounts and such. So the only way to get this permission done was to bring it to council and get a resolution to provide us permission to do investments, even though we've been doing it for a long time. Is there any questions?
That was going to be my question, who's been authorizing these transactions for the last 17 years?
That was my question to the bank, too.
And they've just allowed this to continue.
Yes, exactly.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Twenty-seven.
Extension of license agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company, bill number 7447, ordinance number 9244.
Eric.
Thank you, sir. I'll call the city councilor, Tom Burkey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, before you this evening is another license agreement. This one is an, is really a new license agreement, but it's extending a five-year license agreement that we had given to Norfolk Southern down along Bedford, adjacent to their rail yard. They had entered into a, MDNR, Missouri Department of Natural Resources voluntary cleanup program. They're required to monitor water in some of it. Most of their wells are actually on property that Norfolk Southern owns, but they need some in our right-of-way. They've had it for the last, like I say, five years. MDNR's required them to continue that, and to actually, if this is approved, it will add one additional monitoring well. And I hope you look at this, these a little bit differently than maybe you ever had before. This is actually to the benefit of the city, because ultimately, we're monitoring contaminated groundwater that presumably is now becoming cleaner over a period of time. I'll be glad to answer any questions. This would, if approved, this would extend it for an additional five years, the monitoring wells that are already in ground, except, like I say, except for one additional one that they've been required to put in as well.
First reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance adopting and approving a license agreement by and between the City of North Kansas City, Missouri and Norfolk Southern Railway Company regarding the continued use and installation of certain groundwater monitoring wells in city right-of-way.
I move the bill number 7447 placed on second and final reading and passes ordinance number 9244.
Second.
Call roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance adopting and approving a license agreement by and between the City of North Kansas City, Missouri and Norfolk Southern Railway Company regarding the continued use and installation of certain groundwater monitoring wells in city right-of-way.
Twenty-eight.
Approving accounts due and payable by the city through September 27, 2019, bill number 7451, ordinance number 9248.
First reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing payment for certain accounts due and payable by the city through September 27, 2019.
I move the bill number 7451 be placed on second, final reading and passes ordinance number 9248.
Second. Call roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Aye.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.
An ordinance authorizing payment for certain accounts due and payable by the city through September 27, 2019.
Thank you, sir. There are a couple of written reports in your packet, the upcoming city items of note, as well as our quarterly status of city projects and purchases. Happy to try to answer any questions if you have. Would like to remind the council that following the executive session tonight, the council is going to meet down at the arch to look at some augmented lighting on the arch and provide direction as to whether you'd like to proceed with getting that additional lighting, which, which you'll be able to see. So just keep that in mind. We have, a request came in today, and I'd just like to make sure you don't have any issue with it. Back in May, the council approved a short-term conditional use permit for a car show on Swift between 14th and 16th on Saturday, this coming Saturday. They called and they're concerned about the weather on Saturday, so they were wondering if there would be any objection to them holding that event on Sunday. Do you have any concerns about that?
We don't have anything else planned on Sunday that would interfere with?
No.
No problem.
So, if, yeah, so we'll, we'll let them know that that's all right, if that's okay. Well, thank you. And Kim, would you like to announce an event?
Hello, just thought I'd bring up the Meet the Artists event. This is actually for our Crummet Foundation, the mural project upon completion. It is going to be held in conjunction with the Pint Path, which is going to be Saturday, October 12. The artist, who, whose legal name is Brew Lamb, but goes by the street name of Spaceship Zulu, he will be at the brewery from noon to 2:00 PM, and he'd be happy to chat with anybody who would like to kind of hear more about the mural or meet with him in person. So that is a free event, open to anybody.
And last thing. So the last time that we had a discussion about the Armour Road Complete Street project, the council, what we agreed was that when we had the delineators up, and those delineators did go up Sunday, that we would then come back to council and get some direction from you as to when you would like to conduct a public meeting to review the project in full and to provide any direction that you might have about any adjustments that you'd like to see. So at this time, I'd like to ask if you'd like to schedule that meeting. I would suggest that it be a special meeting on a separate night, not a work session, because my understanding is that you, at least our understanding was that you were interested in taking public input, in which case I think it could conceivably go well over an hour. go well over an hour. Also, noticing it up as a special meeting would allow you then to, if you wished, make a motion and provide some direction to staff. So that would be my one suggestion, as to whatever date you might choose, if you choose one tonight, that it not be, not think of it in terms of being the work session on to October fifteenth.
Thought we'd discuss that and thought we'd put it out for two months.
I think what we said was that we would come to you, because I don't know that there was consensus on that, and to get some direction from you as to how long, when you'd like to do that.
I think, I think we ought to, I mean, we're gonna have a couple of weeks to look at it here anyway. Sometime in the week of that council meeting, maybe the, I don't know if you want to do it Columbus Day or not, or the Wednesday after the meeting, I'm not sure, but.
You're suggesting the fourteenth or sixteenth, sir?
I mean, anytime that, I'm pretty open that week. I don't know how the mayor, I mean, you're.
Of what? You say October?
October.
The fourteenth would be court night.
Oh, that's right, it would be court night, so maybe Wednesday or Thursday?
I think we were talking about pushing it out a little farther than that. Oh, we do have a TIF commission meeting on October sixteenth, I'm sorry, Wednesday the sixteenth, so. I would ask that you don't do it.
I think it's hard to do any less than three months.
It really is not my turn to speak, but, but I wanted to point out to council that actually, now that the delineators are up, and we're kind of seeing how it's all working, if the council would decide that maybe they want to take out part of it, or something like that, we're running close on time to get the construction done. I've been assured that if within two weeks, or say, three, we could get a decision as to what we wanted to do, and if it meant construction, or taking out part of it, we could have it back in before the winter season. So I would really recommend that we have this meeting, this special meeting, and make a final decision on it within, I hope, two weeks.
Just to follow up on what the mayor said. I, I have had discussions with the mayor about if the council wanted to do something like that, whether we could get it done before winter. For a city project, I, I think it would be really very, very difficult for us to bid this project out properly, take bids, get it done in time for winter, which is kind of, when you have to have street work done. So the mayor has indicated.
Yeah, Eric indicated to me that the city wouldn't be able to get it done, and I said, well, wait a minute. I happen to be chairman of the road district. I've contacted our attorney and all the other members of the road district, and they're well on board to go ahead and take this project on and get it done, and I guarantee you, we can get it done before winter, and probably cheaper.
If there's nothing on the seventeenth of October, how about that?
I think it's too soon still. I think you'd have to have at least three months.
What do you need more time for?
It'd be hard to, I mean, what are we judging? What are our metrics for success here?
You ever sit out there during the day and look?
I've driven it, walked it, biked it, sat out there, all the above.
Well, be truthful about it then.
That, that's right.
I had troubles today with it, and I seen on forty-one last night with emergency vehicles, could have had trouble. Did you watch that?
Oh, I saw that. They had plenty of room to get around in the median. On that same clip, there was no traffic in the middle. That, that was very dramatic, the way they shot that, and the way they portrayed it.
I don't have trouble.
It was borderline dishonest, the way they ran that story.
I don't have trouble with bicycle lanes, I'm just, the way we did it. I mean, we screwed up traffic terrible. I pulled out a Taco Bell today, and when I got into the lane, I had to turn into Quick Trip, because that's what the road told me to do. So I had to cut across Quick Trip to get to Knox. That's illegal, by the way.
I think we know where he's gonna vote on the.
Oh, there's no doubt about it.
They know what's happening here.
I made a suggestion for the bicycles two or three years ago that would have worked. I don't mind bicycles. You should increase the size of the sidewalks out to six feet, and let them share the sidewalks instead of the damn roadway.
We keep bringing up.
And parallel parking out in the middle of the street, it's ridiculous.
I mean, I don't know where else in the country you park parallel in the, on the street. You do it in your house, in front of your house. You park on the street.
On the curve, on the curve, and not in the middle of the street.
And, you know, it's more than just bike, it's pedestrian safety, it is car safety as well. We're trying to slow down speeds, trying to make the road safer.
You know, really, I think we're gonna have a special meeting on that. Now is really probably not the time to.
I don't know, I was ready for it tonight.
I'll make, do you want a motion for a different?
It does sound like, it does sound like a motion and a vote might be necessary.
I'll make a motion on.
I had a quick comment.
Seventeenth of October, if there's nothing available, or if nothing going on. Is that Thursday? Can you do Thursday?
Councilmember Smith had a question.
Oh, sorry.
I had a, had a quick comment on this one. So, kind of what, what Councilmember DeLong is saying, we finalized the project on Sunday. We've had two days thus far with the delineators up. They're, right now, to evaluate it within a couple of weeks is going to be very quick, especially if there's an alternative to, you know, completely as is versus completely gone. A third alternative may emerge as we see the street as it is. So giving time to think about what that looks like versus completely reversing course on a project this large within two weeks of completion would just be so fast. It would be a lot of taxpayer money that was spent to do it, and then to then turn it around and just pull it all out, because, you know, change is gonna get this kind of reaction very quickly. I think we need to be a little more measured, but before we spend that kind of money to reverse course. And I understand getting it done before the winter time is, is important, but we need to make sure that we do it right, rather than rush just because we might have snow on the horizon. That, that's my thought on it.
It doesn't mean that we're gonna take everything out, but I do think we need to discuss it. I'll, I'll make the motion if council is available on the seventeenth, or another day that you guys have. Let's, let's do it sooner than later.
Seventeenth of October?
Yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Well, heck, no.
Been pointed out, there's a Chiefs game.
In the crowd.
Thank you.
What's that now?
I'm not missing that.
It's a Chiefs game.
Sorry.
We could do it at six, I mean.
No.
Or some other day. I mean, I'd like to do it.
I would recommend you might start at six, no matter what.
Would a compromise be maybe the first week of November? Or it allows a month?
I mean, the Chiefs game is, I'd want to see it too, but we gotta get this fixed for our citizens. We've got a.
I got a lot of citizens who are for it.
Why can't we have it on a regular council meeting night?
You can, sir. It, it'll be a long night with other business, but if, if you would like to do it that way, you could do it that way. Yes, sir.
I would not recommend that. I think there's gonna be a lot of people who need to speak. I need to hear the public input. I mean, I wouldn't allow plenty of time for that public input, and if we put it on a night where we have a regular council meeting, we'll be here till two in the morning, and I'll stay till two in the morning, but I want to hear that input. I've heard a lot of things on both sides of this issue.
Yep.
So I would recommend November sixth, would be my suggestion, unless there's a Chiefs game.
No.
Too far out.
That was my compromise.
We're sure pushing the envelope.
I think October's the same time. Or the next week in October.
Well, that's what I said, you actually, but.
Well, if you like, we'll put it on as an agenda item. We'll probably make it the first agenda item on, on your next council meeting, with, with the idea that the public will be invited to speak, I'm assuming. And we'll do our best to try to keep other items on the agenda to a minimum, although it's, sometimes we have to put items before you, but we'll, we can do our best to try to minimize the rest of the agenda, but if that's the way you want to go, we can do it that way.
I think that's a poor decision.
I do, too. Emotions are very high right now, as we just saw with the quick discussion back and forth, and having, engaging the public and bringing that in right now within just so fast. I think it's a poor decision as well to go that quickly.
I agree.
I'd like to make a motion to put it on October fifteenth, at our meeting then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilmember Stefan made the motion to put it on October fifteenth. Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, and then I, do you guys want to take a roll?
My motion was never seconded, so, yeah.
Do y'all want to take a roll call vote?
I think we better, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
No.
Councilmember Pierce?
No.
Councilmember Pierman? I mean, Councilmember Smith?
Absolutely not.
Councilmember Pierman?
No.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes.
Got a tie.
Yes.
That concludes staff reports, sir.
Got it.
That concludes staff reports.
Okay, councilman's comments.
I'd like to thank the police, I guess, because I had the problem with, well, I've seen the problem, similar to what the gentleman said earlier, at twenty-fifth, is parking in the yellow places, and I haven't seen any more of it, so I don't know if you guys talked to the school, or gave warnings. I didn't want to see nobody get tickets, but I wanted them to quit parking in the yellow, because the fire trucks and ambulance can't make the turn, and I appreciate that, it's work, whatever you did. And, like, I would like to comment on this bicycle lanes and, I'm not against bicycle lanes. Shoto has them, that they're shared. I just don't like the way it ended up. It looked better on paper than it does in real life, and I have heard maybe one good comment about it, and a lot of bad. I just think we are good at settling one way or the other, and we're having worked in concrete in my life. It depends on the winter. You can work all winter, some winters, so, we'll see.
I really don't have anything to say tonight.
Unlike Mr. Stewart, I'm not against bike lanes. If you go up Norfolk Trafficway, they've done, what Rita hates, a road diet on Norfolk, because you go up the hill. It was four lanes, now it's down to two, which I don't see how that's going to work, but they have a huge bike lane on the east side of the road. I, I'm not against bike lanes, but, but what we have now is, is not traffic friendly at all. I left Quick Trip today, out on Knox, coming west to get here. It took me ten minutes to get to City Hall. Traffic wouldn't let anybody out. Ten minutes to get to City Hall. That's all.
All right. I'm all mixed up here in my notes here. First off, we awarded our first tourism grant tonight, so, that was for the Pint Path, October twelfth, as Kim already mentioned, so get out and support the event, and hopefully the grant pays off through new sales tax revenue collection. Congratulations on getting that program implemented and going. Glad to see that done. Also, I think the tour part of the performing arts building this last weekend at the school, I think the school district did a great job making sure that students have a great learning, great, high-quality learning environment up there. I mean, the top-notch looking facility. And, I'll leave it at that.
I think we had a really wonderful homecoming, even though it had to be done in two parts. I appreciate the fact, I always, since I have a convertible, I get to drive someone around in the parade, and it was nice to see staff all out and about, and we saw a lot of citizens out and about. With all the controversy going on right now, it was lovely to take a little break from all of it for a day or two, where everybody kind of came together, and it was a lot of fun, and, and I enjoyed that. I, too, am not against bike lanes. I think Eighteenth Street would have been a better choice. We already indicated path, we could jazz that street up and avoid a lot of this struggle.
Couple things, like Councilman DeLong mentioned, Pint Path is October twelfth. There's been a lot of great work going into planning that. It's gonna be a really, really neat thing to get out, riding a bike around North Kansas City, and explore different businesses, what's out there, what we have to offer. Tomorrow morning, I believe, there's a Coffee with a Cop at McDonald's, eight to nine. Pretty cool. I just saw it on Facebook, so. Can you give us a little flavor for that, real quick?
We've done several Coffee with a Cop events over the last several years. This is in coordination with National Coffee with a Cop Day, so a lot of the, you'll see a lot of agencies around town that are hosting events. McDonald's reached out to us several weeks ago and asked to see if they could co-sponsor with us, and full steam ahead, and everything's good to go, and we hope to see as many people there as we can.
Very good. Thank you. And with, with the Armour Road discussion, I would encourage folks to email us your thoughts, especially if you can't make it to the public session. Let us know for or against what you think. We really want to get this right. I, I still think that the timeline is very rushed, but we need that feedback now more than ever if we're gonna, if we're gonna make the right decision on this. Thanks.
A few things for me tonight. First of all, congratulations to board members, new ones and continuing. We always appreciate their service. They're the unsung heroes of our town, and their service is much appreciated. We also, I forgot to mention this last council meeting, but we had an Eagle Scout do some projects at the small dog park, and those were, those are great, so we love them, and go to the dog park all the time, and appreciate that effort and project. Thank you to our visitors today, and if anyone ever wants to speak at a public meeting, there's time, of course, in the beginning, so always come and share your thoughts. I agree with Councilmember Smith. Email us, give us your thoughts. Come to the ten fifteen meeting if you can, pro or con, doesn't really matter. I want to hear that feedback. I know the rest of the council does, too. Hard part about being on the council, or just being in any position like this, is you not only have to make decisions for today, but you have to make decisions for the future. So when we make decisions, we have to think about what the children are gonna do, what our roads are gonna look like, what, so even though things are frustrating today, and they are, we also have to look out, and we have to try to make the best decision possible. So it's a hard position to be in, and you can see, obviously, we're very passionate about it. I also invite you to come to the Pint Path, and what'd you call the art opening? What'd you call that?
It's the Meet the Artist event.
Meet the Art, so she'll be here, or he'll be here. He's a mural artist. Okay, got, got it. Space something Zulu.
Spaceship.
Zulu, got it. Okay, so come to that, I'm coming to that, it'll be fun. And that's all I have.
Regarding the public art at Richards Park that's going up, do we know of a timeframe of when that'll be done, just out of curiosity?
The pieces are complete. They'll be shipped to North Kansas City. Unsure, originally we had hoped that that was gonna be at the end of October. We have had a little bit of a snag on the engineering part. We're hoping that that will still go in probably mid-November. That date is probably more achievable at this point.
Okay. Piggyback on Rita's comments, I went to homecoming as well, and it was great, except for the lightning. Hornets are four and O, so let's keep it going, boys. Let's see, I also want to welcome and thank the board members that are coming on, and the ones that are re-upping, so they're, again, the unsung heroes of our community. And, I mean, we've talked about Armour Road. I will concur that I, I do like the bike lanes. You know, me as a pedestrian, I kind of like the bumpouts, but if we're gonna have two lanes of traffic, those need to come out. It's not just about what I want, it's about what's best for the city now and in the future, so we gotta look at that. And, you know, definitely, we've heard from our constituents, more constituents, if you want to let us know, come talk to us, email us, come to the meeting if you can. You know, we do listen to you. We do, we do value what you say, and, you know, I think we're a pretty cohesive council on most things, so we'll, we'll work this out, so. That's it.
Did you ever find out who those people were you was hauling around?
I love the way you phrase that, hauling around. It was the Geist family, so I'm not, I, I know that there was connection to North Kansas City High School. You know, and I visited more with them, with them, because there were four of them in my small car, so she's the only one I could speak to. But they're a lovely, lovely family, and they had another son who was coming in from the Air Force, so there was a lot of military background in that family. It was a delight to meet them.
I don't got nothing.
Do we have a bike rack here, outside?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is it over on that side? Okay. No, I just couldn't remember if we had a bike rack here at this building. Thank you.
Thirty-two.
Consideration of a request to hold in recess into an executive session is requested by the city administrator to be held on this date on a real estate matter pursuant to Missouri revised statutes, section six, ten, point oh-two-one, two.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Oh, yeah. Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stefan?
Yes.
Councilmember Farr?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember DeLong?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yep.
Councilmember Pierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clevenger?
Yes, ma'am.